Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us. This is the September 17th meeting of the East Fisher Town Board. This is a workshop meeting where typically the Board will meet with our professionals to discuss matters of importance of the town. So if you please rise and join me in the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Tonight, under supervisor's announcements, there's really only one thing I'd like to discuss. As everybody knows, Global Foundries purchased the IBM property. They closed on July 1st of this year, and we had met with, I had met with Global Foundries' representatives a few times just before and just after. And each time we discussed with the Global Foundries representatives about the assessments and the property values, they mentioned and they were very adamant that they did not want to be in the PILOT program. PILOT stands for Payment in Lieu of Taxes. And that was something that, at the time, New York State and IBM entered into that agreement back in 1997. That agreement, a PILOT, establishes a certain rate of payment in lieu of taxes, so it comes off the tax rolls, but there's a set fee that they pay every year in lieu of taxes. And typically, it's been probably around $7, $8 million a year that IBM had paid to us. And it was on a scale that was increasing over the years. In 2012, we renegotiated that PILOT with IBM. We passed that here at the Town Board. IBM agreed to it. And we stepped it down just a little bit because the property values had been falling over the years. And we stepped down over a two-year period, I believe, to a fixed payment of $8.35 million. And it was a 15-year PILOT agreement that we signed in 2012. When Global Foundries bought the property, they said that they were not interested, corporate was not interested in being in the PILOT. But on the other hand, they said they did understand the need of the community for the funds, and they recognized that need. So what happened is shortly after the purchase, there was a lot of activity during the purchase, but they did approach the Dutchess County IDA, which was who this PILOT was with, IBM Dutchess County IDA. And there was a clause in the contract that upon transfer of the property, they could come out of the PILOT, which they did the other day. I think everybody read about it in the newspaper. And they came out and they immediately came over for an assessment. They talked to our assessor, and they met, and they came up with an assessed value, and I have it written down. I think the assessed value was $276 million for the site. That was what they thought the assessed value would be. And Tom, I think you would back me up. That was pretty accurate, we feel, that $276 million?
Correct, from the appraisals that were done in 2012.
Yeah.
And everything that seemed to be the appropriate value.
Because McGrath, McGrath Associates, Don McGrath, who just recently passed away, was a very, very well-respected appraiser. And he's the only person I know that actually appraised the IBM property a few different times. Actually, he also represented, I guess he represented Poughkeepsie in the lawsuit against IBM up there. So he's very, very familiar with these types of properties. And he originally was based on, we believe, and when you go back to these documents, the newspapers threw out number 800 million or something like that. And I don't know where they came up with that. It's kind of a mystery where they came up with that number because it's been off the tax rolls since 1997. So using Don McGrath's formulas for square footage, we came up with this number of $276 million, which equates to just about $8.35 million a year. So basically, the transfer of the property off the PILOT onto the tax rolls at this valuation keeps the PILOT intact, or the amount of the PILOT payment intact. So there was a lot of concern about that, but Global has assured me they recognize the needs of the community, and they would not step away from their responsibility. And they showed that with this valuation agreement the other day. So I just want to point that out to everybody. Sometimes the newspaper says that, they often refer to a PILOT as a tax break. A PILOT is not necessarily a tax break. Sometimes a PILOT could actually work in our favor, which I think that this was one that worked in our favor, based on the square footage formulas from Mr. McGrath. But what a PILOT does, it gives you consistency. It gives you a set payment every year. So there's going to be a little fluctuation with this one, but Global has assured us that they're very comfortable with this amount. So I just wanted to bring that out. Anything else I should add, Tom? Any thoughts on that?
And just that we don't get the whole $8 million.
And we don't get the whole $8 million. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I guess, it's distributed to the Walter Central School System, who gets about $6.2 million. I think Dutchess County gets a little more than $900,000, gets a little bit more than us. We get about $900,000. The county gets a little bit more than that. And then you have the library and the fire district. So out of all that, we really get about $900,000. But in this economy, we appreciate that. So that being said, I just wanted to let everybody know. And dealing with Global Foundries has been very good, so hopefully we'll continue a good relationship. So that's about it. That's all I wanted to say tonight, because I know there's been quite a big coverage in the newspaper. With that, I'm going to open the public work session. And first on the agenda is a discussion. It says discussion signage. I guess when we did the agenda, I should have worked on the grammar a little bit more. It's not really discussion of signage. It's really discussion of our sign ordinance. And we've received a couple of letters from local people, a local engineering firm and a local sign company. And they brought up some issues that they asked us to look at in regards to our sign ordinance. And so I gave everybody a copy of the sign ordinance as it exists. And I also got some comments from down the building and zoning department, where they enact the sign ordinance, where they do the paperwork, they make sure that, you know, everything works in accordance with the sign ordinance. But what I see from the letters I've gotten, it appears to be the square footage requirements of a freestanding sign. That seems to be one issue that has everybody concerned. Now, tonight, instead of our town engineer, we have Michelle Robbins, and she's our town planner. So we welcome you. Thank you very much, Michelle, for coming. Michelle, being a planner, they're very, very much involved with drafting laws, environmental types of things, signage, and also, and she's very involved with our second part of tonight's discussion, which will be on solar panels. But what I see, back to the signs, what I see seems to be a concern about total overall footage of freestanding signs. And I believe the overall square footage is limited pretty much on freestanding sign to 36 square feet. And looking at what we have out there now, we have different types of malls. It's been 36 square feet since I can remember in the town of East Fisher. So maybe it is something that needs to be looked at. Also, we have different types of malls now. We have different types of commercial plazas, larger ones like A&amp;P over there. I thought there should be more signage myself out on Route 82. And I've often said to them, you know, gee, if you would come in, why don't you make an application, and we could change the law to give you more? They never did. But we have had a sign company and an engineering firm request of looking at this. One other one I would point out will be when the dome comes in down on Route 52, they're going to want a large sign. You have 157 acre industrial area, and they're going to want a certain amount of signage. So this is something we also have to consider. So with that, I don't know if the Board has any questions. I'd like to ask Michelle what her thoughts on this are.
Sure.
You're very well experienced in this matter.
The majority of the complaints that we've seen thus far-
Hold the microphone close to you.
The majority of the-
You speak rather low.
Majority of the complaints that we've seen thus far happen on larger plazas where there's multiple uses. And so what ends up happening is that the first person comes in and they take up a certain amount of signage, and then as they add tenants on, there's less and less room for other tenants to add on to the sign. So it is pretty common, because this is a fairly new sign law, that, you know, over the first couple of years, you tend to figure out that there are few tweaks here and there that need to be made with sign laws. So that is not, that is nothing that's not common. Yeah, it's a very usual thing. So I think in this particular case, we may have to start looking at what some of the issues are that people are bringing to our attention, maybe what they're trying to, potentially asking for variances from. And I know that we, we're not, this is a separate ordinance, we're not allowing variances right now.
Well, I have one question I did write down. Would it be appropriate to allow an applicant to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a variance?
Perhaps that's a tweak we could make in the zoning to allow that. And then also, we may be able to adjust the sign law to accommodate these plazas where there's multiple uses.
Okay. And that's, again, back to A&amp;P, I never understood they had the big A&amp;P sign out there. And then you could just make, it just lends itself to that type of signage, but it's not there.
Right.
And I never did understand that. You know, being not right on the road, you know, you drive by, you really don't know what is in there.
Right. And then I think also in this town, we also have older plazas, and sometimes they're getting split up differently than they were originally envisioned. And so maybe some of the spaces are smaller, and there's additional tenants as well, and that also can cause problems.
Okay. So anybody on the Board, but my thought is we need to change the law, and if the Board feels it's appropriate to allow going to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a variance in a unique case, that's something that the law doesn't cover. Any thoughts, any comments?
Michelle, you said that certain plazas, certain stores come in first, and they take more space on a sign. When we, they go through the review and they apply for a sign, aren't the spaces kind of divided according to the amount of stores in a plaza?
They can be originally, and then sometimes if a plaza's older, they've been reused. And so sometimes you'll see a different allocation of the space, or a site that potentially, you know, may not have, it may have been a business that wasn't so reliant on advertising, and now it is a business that relies more on advertising. So you see different types of things happening on the sites. And I think that's what the flexibility in the sign law, it may be a good idea to add some flexibility in the sign law to accommodate that.
Right. But do we have, as of right now, I tried to read it today, do we have something in the books that if an older plaza comes in now and wants a new sign, do they go back and have to basically go through what we usually give the new plazas that they come in as a town law? Or how do we handle that so far?
There's no differentiation between an old plaza and a new plaza.
No, I mean, if they come in, they can comply. I think if you look at the table in the back of the sign ordinance, the issue that you have is how big of signs should you allow? So this table, if you're in a B1 business zone, which most of our businesses are, each business is allowed up to 80 square feet of signage on their respective space. If it's one freestanding building, they get 80 square feet. If it's five stores, each store gets 80 square feet. If it's a multiple tenant, then you're allowed the freestanding sign. That's limited to 36 square feet. So maybe that has to be adjusted. But I think it's up to the Board to decide, you know, if 80 square feet per store isn't enough, is a hundred percent-
Right, how do you determine when that breaking point is, when it's too big?
Yeah, exactly. And that's the-
That's why we have Michelle here. That's why we have Michelle.
And I think Michelle made a very good point. When you put these things together the first shot, after a couple of years, you see, and I think that most of the complaints are, that the freestanding signs aren't big enough.
Right.
And of course, there's a lot, there's many complaints where people don't think 80 square feet's enough. And then the other issue, which, you know, was attempted to be addressed too, is that if you have an 80-square-foot sign in the top of the store, and then you fill your window with signage, does that signage in the window count towards your 80 square feet? Or do you allow all that signage in the window and don't count it under the sign law? And it's a matter of the community's taste as to how you want to see a commercial plaza. I know as a businessperson, you would probably want to have, you know-
A lot of signage.
A lot of signage. And I don't think anyone's disparaging that you could put up a sales sign or things like that. But the question is, is do you allow the 80-square-foot sign plus 200-square-foot window that's completely filled with tenants? So that's, but that's a decision.
Michelle, as far as the new plazas that have come in for reviews, are they happy with the amount of signage that they've got?
I think typically, I think one of the, one time it came up was, as John mentioned, in the dome property, because of course, that was a use previously, right? And so there was a certain amount of signage allotted to that site, and now there's a new use happening in there that needs additional signage. And so those are the types of issues kind of that we're coming across right now. And there's, you know, there's two specific cases in here that they're talking about where they don't have, where they feel like they don't have enough signage. Both of them mentioned the 36 feet not being enough. So, I mean, there's a couple of ways you could do this. You can go around and you can look at communities in which you like the signage that you've seen, or communities that you like the way it looks, and you can look at their sign law and sort of say, well, what are they doing there that we might be able to, you know, copy? Or you can try to come up with your own idea. And I think that's what happened here. We tried to come up with something, and maybe we're just seeing a little bit of growing pains, you know? Like first, we just enacted this law, and now people are coming back and saying, well, actually, this might not be working exactly how we want it to, and how should we tweak it? And there's some suggestions here. And I think it's not a bad idea to go back through the building department complaints about the signage and sort of see, there are definitely some common complaints, and see how we might be able to remedy that by looking at what people are typically upset over.
But I also think to answer your question perhaps a little more specifically, sometimes you get a building that is a unique location, size, setting, et cetera. So over the past few years, there's been one or two of those that probably the owner hasn't been satisfied with the signage, because if you have a building that's close to the road, and you want signage out on the road, and then when you pull into the parking lot, you want signage there in the back, the law, you know, limited the amount of signs. So that had to be addressed with the zoning board for an appeal. But maybe you have to make provision for unique circumstances like that.
You know, being a business owner, I mean, I just want to bring this up, that, yeah, there should be some kind of a signage regulation as far as the road exposure. But I would, I would really not regulate what goes in as far as additional signage in a plaza. I mean, once somebody enters a plaza, let's say like the A&amp;P in here, and he's looking for a store, I, yeah, we want to, the appeal has to be reviewed by the Architectural Review Board. But once, I would feel more lax or relaxed to make that, give that plaza, you know, at the end of the day is bringing the customers in. And if we regulate the sign on the road apparently so that people are not distracted when they try. I know that when I go someplace where I can't find a place, it's hard to find where I'm going. If we make it even more difficult, and I'm not saying that we have to be extravagant and really go the other way, but, and I think that we should have an idea of how to handle this, rather than having the zoning board. They were here, and they said that they're overwhelmed with a lot of work. I really don't want to see all these people going for a variance if we could handle it at the beginning of the game, so.
And I think some of the times that the cases where what's happened is there's maybe shopping centers that have two entrances, and so, you know, the sign law is good at handling a typical shopping center where you have one major entrance, but maybe you're trying to have signage in front and then also in the back. Or maybe you're trying to have more visibility in another location, and that doesn't necessarily cover those circumstances.
Yeah. And to that point, just a couple of points, what I would like to see, and I would say the Zoning Board of Appeals, we don't allow Zoning Board of Appeals applications in this sign law at all. But I think we could allow it for those unique situations where, gee, no matter what I do, I cannot comply with the sign ordinance. I think we should allow that. And I don't think that'll overwhelm the Board if it's used, if we address the other issues ourselves, you know? That would be like for that real unique issue. What I would like to, what I'm thinking where is, and I understand Councilman's point, of course, it's always been this way between the town and the sign company. We're always trying to find a balance. We want the town to look nice, and sometimes sign companies get a little bit carried away, and they want to have these signs. So we need to find a balance. We don't want to impede anybody's rights. I would like to see if we could find a larger, and I'm not sure how we're going to do this, larger freestanding than 36 square foot, because I don't think that works. But there has to be certain criteria for that, which I would think, and I'm not saying stick with 36 square foot, because I think that that may be a basic problem here, but then you're also going to have to look at size of the commercial property. How big of a commercial property is it? And to the attorney's point too, I don't know. So you'd want to make sure that it's fair they have enough signage out on the road, and also in the plaza, I would say you want to make sure they have enough signage on the building. I, and this is my personal feeling, and maybe I'm wrong, I would say the window signage is separate from the outside signage. I don't think they should be combined, but that's just my personal opinion. Because I kind of think in a window, you kind of have rights to do what you want to do. You want to put in a sales sign or something like that. But I was wondering if Michelle could help us take a look at some of these, and I think it's a dimensional issue right now. I mean, there's other things that the building department is asked logistically with the sign ordinance, you know? But I think what these letters are requesting is, it's a, the size of the sign issue.
Right.
That's my thought.
I have a few thoughts. Well, I definitely think that we definitely need some sort of relief for, there's a lot of unique situations in town. Not a lot, but there's quite a few that come up where a business is off the beaten path, and they've come and they can't get any relief. So going to the zoning board, I think, is an excellent idea, because that is a hardship. Certain locations are hardship. If you could prove that, then the zoning board will grant you some relief. I think the biggest problem is the sites where it's the 100,000 to 499,999 square feet. And like you said, the ladder sign out in front might help if we could increase that somehow, because with those 100 to 500,000 square feet plazas, like Michelle said, you have multiple entrances, you have on different roads. So people want to have their sign shown wherever, all these businesses. There has to be, you know, we don't want the whole town full of signs, but there has to be some sort of happy medium. But I think we should really think about the ladder signs and the 100 to 500,000 square feet plazas. It's my opinion.
Well, we can look at other towns as well, correct? And see what they have?
Absolutely.
And you, you're involved in other towns as well, right? So how do they do it?
Yeah, we're involved in other towns. And, well, not, I mean, a lot of them are struggling with the same issues. And I can give you an example. There's a sports complex in Brewster, and I went there one day, and I laughed because, you know, we went through a back entrance. It was like an industrial park, and there were several entrances, and the sign was literally this size. And no one could read it, and they were piled on top of one another, and everybody was driving around looking for the entrance to the thing. And that's, that's an example where it's just, it just doesn't work. And it's frustrating for people trying to get there, and it's frustrating for the people that own the business. And so in that case, they had a similar type of law where they were supposed to put the signage out front, and they didn't have an allowance for signage elsewhere other than a tiny little sign. So in those cases, it really doesn't make any sense. And we have to, we have to look at those particular things and sort of tweak the law to adjust that. And I think we have to use a little bit of common sense probably initially when we're going through this, because I think it's really, you know, it's one of those things where it's going to be a little trial by error probably. And there's no perfect sign ordinance.
Is there, as of right now, Tom, excuse me, is there a, are we not allowing for more than one entrance, like Michelle said, to have some kind of a balance between the front sign and another additional sign?
Yeah, I mean, there's many things you could do. If you increase the size of the signs allowed, but if they have multiple entrances, then perhaps there's a reduction of the sign on the individual stores in exchange for greater signage out at both entrances, or, you know, things like that. We also attempted in this sign ordinance to say in a new plaza that the location of the signs would be on the renderings brought to the Architectural Review Board and the Planning Board from the beginning, so that then, once those sites were determined, they wouldn't have to go through any other review process. They could just get building permit, put up the sign. So maybe what we have to do is to consider that the Planning Board should have a little of flexibility in allowing, or creating the maximum number of signage square footage, because, you know, when you're doing the renderings of a building, if they show, well, we're going to put the signs, they're all going to be relating in a uniform manner, it starts to make it look nicer. And then maybe the Planning Board could say, well, okay, a bigger sign is all right here. So maybe we have to think about that.
Because the Planning Board is reviewing all the site issues.
On the new, or changes of plazas.
Now, the other thing I want to bring out is that my hindsight is gone as I get old. And I know that I'm having a hard time when I drive through a main road to really look at a sign. And, you know, sometimes you have to go around a few times. This is something, like you said, common sense. Let's do something and keep everything in mind that, yeah, there are some people out there that have issues. Funding it, please. So.
Well, some communities actually are encouraging these, the ladder signs, and allowing them to be a little bit bigger in exchange for reducing the other signage, because that would address that problem. When you're driving along the road, you would see what plaza you had to go into, and what they do there too is they have recommended architectural designs, you know, the structure for the ladder sign, because the community's looking for, like in the Hopi Loam of Hamlet, if everybody had a ladder sign and they were somewhat similar in the structural shape and design, and then they had their signs on it, it kind of, you know, doesn't look as bad as everybody has-
Or uniformity.
-different signage, you know? And that would allow the bigger signs in the front, and yet the plazas would look, you know, a little better. So I think that consensus is you want, we have to allow bigger, more square footage and to work on encouraging the ladder signage and put in appeals process.
Yes. And again, I think that we could also look, as you said, the types of properties we're looking at, they have two entrances, and addressing that, allowing them, you know, a certain amount of square footage at each entrance. I do, I think that's the way to go. Michelle, could you put something together for us?
Sure.
I mean, you work with other towns, and you see other things done. You could put something together in the next few weeks and email it to the Board and myself?
Yes.
And we'll take a look at it. Maybe we'll consider that in amending the sign word. Instead, if anybody, if you don't mind, if anybody in the Town Board comes up with an idea or a question in the meantime, email you. If they're driving around, say, you know something, I didn't think of that. Michelle, what about this, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure, and if there's any signs that you really like, and that you think are a good representation of what you'd like to see, that would be nice to know, too.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion on signs?
One thing that I know, we talked about it a few years ago when we did this, and I did double-check the date today, political signs, because it's that time of year. I remember when we talked about it originally, I thought we went to 30 to 45 days before the election.
There was, there was a time period before the election, yeah.
Yeah. But I just read it today, and for some reason, it's 60. Is there a reason why we went back to 60? You remember?
I can't remember yesterday.
Was that a town law, or was that state?
That was, no, that was-
It was our law, yeah.
It was ours. Because I know we talked about 30 to 45.
Yeah, I forget how we ended up at that.
I don't remember how we went back to 60. We play with the idea back to 45.
Well, consider that if the Board feels it's-
Part of the thing is that it may have been at the time, you know, the Supreme Court of the United States weighs in on this stuff every now and then when it comes to political things. And at the time, that may have been the case that the Supreme Court, you know, decided within the timeframe where the court accepted 60 days as not being unreasonable restriction of the rights of the candidate, but we'll take another look.
Michelle, while we are over here today, I know you mentioned signage with the dome. What is your take on that? And since we have so much square footage available over there, how do you feel that we should kind of handle that?
Well, I think, I mean, we actually brought it up with the applicant to try to sort of be a little proactive and ask them, you know, what they're planning to do with signage. And they don't 100% have it ironed out yet, but there's, there are going to be multiple entrances there, and there is potential for a lot more development to happen on that site at a future date. So we're concerned about using up all the signage in the one lot.
And then you're going to be like that sports dome in Brewster, where they, the last side gets a little bit of sign.
So we did talk, asked them to present us some signage ahead of time, and I think they're working on that right now, so we can take a look at it and sort of try to think about what makes sense over there.
So even over there, we want to go with one big sign and then split it, or multiple signs?
We haven't really, yeah.
I think, yeah, they, I don't know that, I mean, I only know that they have, I know that they have one sign that they're proposing on the dome, but that's the only signage I know of right now. I'm sure they're going to want something on the road.
You know, that's, that's an odd one, and that's one reason we're actually having this discussion also, because we have all that acreage. What happens, you're going to have the dome, people are going to want to sign on 52. But then the rest of the people are going to want to sign, so, and they have two entrances. So, yeah, it's something we have to look at.
Right, something that, I mean, these people are probably going to open up for business soon and we really need to think about that.
Yeah, we've asked them for, we've asked them to provide us with their ideas and I think that they're working on that right now.
What about our own idea? How do we want to handle that?
Well, we, we have had some, some internal discussion about it, but it, it also sort of depends on how the site, the circulation is going to work and all that kind of stuff. So we're, I mean, that's the problem, too. Until a site is actually opened, you don't really know how the traffic patterns are going to work. And that really sometimes also weighs in heavily on how the signage will ultimately have to, to work. And in that particular case, you're also going to need wayfinding signage to direct people to the entrance because it's such a large structure. So that, there's all sorts of different signage on that site and different issues on that site as well.
And without actually knowing what's going to happen to the rest of the site.
It's hard to, yeah, it's hard to.
It's hard to decide, yeah. But this is why we're having this discussion, too.
And what makes sense? I mean, they, they have proposed a couple of ideas where they want to put, you know, I know that they certainly want to put a sign at one of the entrances. I know that they've also proposed signage, you know, on top of the, like in the middle of the dome where the entrance is.
What about the other side, where there's going to be another exit or entrance on the other side?
Well, and that, and that, the issue there is it's not necessarily their property. So that's the other, those are the other kinds of issues that you come, come across. So it's, there's, it's complicated. It's very complicated.
Okay. Mr. Supervisor, can I discuss the recreation fields, the signs there? Or save that for the leading on report?
We can talk about that in just one second.
Sure.
So, so Michelle, we're good?
Yes.
You kind of know what we need?
Yes, I got a good sense of where people are.
And you could send us what's your, your concept?
Sure.
And then we'll respond to you with any thoughts that we have, too. Also, there's a couple of things in the sign ordinance that the building department have made some mention of, some little logistical issues that maybe we could take a look at together and incorporate them, too. And some of them were just very minor, but something that should be looked at. Like you say, you, you initiate, you, you adopt a sign ordinance and then you wait a couple of years to see how the thing, the thing really works.
Right.
And it's a, it's a tuning process, so.
Exactly, exactly. Very common.
All right, sounds good. And yes, Tom, you want to?
Yeah, if you don't mind. Over the past month or two, we've been discussing with the rec advisory board and I've discussed with you and with the town attorney about advertising on our ball fields, on all our recreation fields. I don't know how other towns do that. I know we've checked on a few other ones and some of them, there's different ways that they go about doing it. The original intent was to have our, our leagues solicit some companies and we would put banners out on the fields, baseball, soccer. And that money would in turn get turned back to the fields to help with the maintenance. And as the town attorney had expressed, that money actually will go, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but it goes directly to the general fund. And then we can earmark that eventually back to the fields. After discussion with the rec advisory board, it seemed like it would open up a Pandora's box if we left it to the leagues to go and solicit for these signs, for the advertisements. I would like to see if we can do it, if our rec department would be able to do that. And that would give us a little bit more flexibility to spend that money on the fields, particularly for maintenance, sort of help ease the, the burden on the taxpayers. Would we be able to, to do something like that?
Well, as I said, there's several opinions at the New York State Controller, which says that it's town property, so therefore any revenue derived from it has to go to the town, as you've indicated. You would probably want to establish some criteria by the town board, what's acceptable size, size, et cetera. Many communities allow people to sponsor the scoreboards.
We were looking into that.
Things like that on a seasonal basis or an annual basis. And that money is, is that, and it goes into the general fund as well revenue that the town does, but then use the control of the, have the control of the budget, you would allocate it or appropriate, appropriate as you see fit for recreation for the fields or whatever, but.
New equipment in particular?
Yes, yes. There, there is no issue with that, that you can't do that within the fields.
Okay, great, thank you.
The controller's not smiling. I guess he said it went into the general fund, but it didn't come out. I heard more money in that.
He just likes it coming in. He doesn't like.
Yeah, that's the problem. So how do we go about this then? So we would actually, we'll set the criteria for sizes of signs?
Yeah, the rec advisory board was looking into that.
Colors of signs, length of time they would be there, I guess.
Correct.
Okay.
And then, you know, that money would come in and we'd be able to help maintain the fields because the fields need to be maintained. They get a lot of footwork there.
Yeah.
More traffic.
Are these more banners that you're considering or?
Yes, mhm.
And the scoreboard signs?
Scoreboard as well. We would look into, like the town attorney said, looking for sponsorship.
And it's, but the other issue is, is that there's the appropriateness of the ads. I mean, I don't think you want Bud Light being advertised.
No, 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 we, that's, that was discussed, no alcohol, tobacco, anything like that. I think that goes with that same.
What if we say products would be used by?
Any, I think anything that's restricted otherwise to children shouldn't be advertised.
Yeah, exactly.
So if you can't buy cigarettes or.
And obviously, we would look locally first.
Yeah.
Okay. So what would we do then, Tom? Do you want to speak with the rec advisory board or do we want to set the criteria ourselves?
Um, I think we should set the criteria right now. And then we can go and see if that, if it's doable, if we can go out and have our rec department do it, whether we advertise on channel twenty-two or email or just let it be known to our local businesses that if they would like to advertise in our fields.
Yeah, put it on the website.
Right.
Okay. Would you like to take a look at the criteria then, as we were just discussing?
Sure.
Okay, oh, that'd be great. Good, anything else? Any other questions on that? I think it's a really good idea.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda for discussion is solar energy systems because we've had a couple of applications for solar panels. Now, when I think of a solar panel, I think of a solar panel as being on a roof and I didn't think there was a problem with that. But now I see there's a lot of solar panels. I just went to, I went to a farm market in Connecticut about a month ago and they had a large solar array, array out there in the field. And, you know, I didn't realize, I think the ground mounted ones are actually going to become more popular than climbing up on the roof and installing them. But we have no rules that allow them and we, if we do allow them, we need to have, again, criteria by which they would be approved. So I don't know, and Michelle, you and Tom both provided us with some kind, with some thoughts on this.
Well, I think you're right. This doesn't in any way intend to regulate roof mounted systems. So I think we got to be clear on that.
Yeah.
And the main purpose of it, it does go through and describe a roof mounted system so that, you know, it's not like an extension of units that are projected ten feet above a roof.
Right, right, right.
Things like that, but the ones that are roof mounted and everything would continue to be handled just as they are with a building permit, et cetera. What this does attempt to set some criteria is for the freestanding solar panels. We have started to receive some applications. The zoning board has determined that they're, they're regulated as a structure.
Okay.
So you're not allowed accessory structures in the front yards and side yards of your property. It has to be in the rear yards. There's certain height limitations, about ten feet. There would be a screening requirement so that, you know, if you have a large yard and you put them all in the corner right up against your neighbor's lot line, that's not necessarily what everybody wants or needs. So there's some setback requirements. There's a requirement for some screening.
What kind of screening do they use? They use, well, trees could grow, overgrow it.
Well, what they do is they put like a fencing or low level shrubbery so that the, the structure that holds the panels up isn't just visible.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the panels themselves might be in some way. And also there's some issues that would require that they have to be placed so that if there's no glare that reflects into a neighbor's home.
Yeah.
Things like that, okay, so.
And especially if you have one near your road, too. You wouldn't want any glare if you're driving down the road.
Right, things like that.
You wouldn't want any glare.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And this is really almost a standard proposal. A lot of communities have already quickly adopted things. I guess like the sign ordinance, you might have to adjust it.
Revisit it.
Correct.
At a future time. Also, this one includes wind turbines.
Correct. Well, that's Michelle's version.
Oh, that was Michelle's version.
Yeah, I just, we were, since we were looking at alternative energy, I just wanted to bring up that right now we're seeing a lot with solar because New York State's put a push for tax credits and grants for solar panels. So we're seeing a lot of solar applications. But I anticipate that we may also start seeing other alternative energy like wind. And, and it's just, sometimes it's good to think about it ahead of time before you're reacting to it.
Yeah.
So, you know, whether or not you even want to allow it and, and how it can be allowed and that kind of thing. So it's just something to consider along with the solar.
All right, and definitely the immediate need is solar panels.
Yes, I mean, there's, we, we already had several applications in the middle of the park.
Yeah, and then I agree with you, I think that, and maybe not with this applic, maybe not with this proposal, maybe at a later date, not too far down the road, we could also include wind, wind power type of situations. Everybody take a look at the solar panels? I didn't see anything in there that jumped out that said to me that this is a terrible burden or anything like that. I think it's pretty cut and dry. Any thoughts on this?
Tom, question, I know there is different types of solar panel. Some solar panels have a battery inside and that's kind of more of a detriment to the environment. Are we allowing any type of solar panel or are we restricting just solar panels?
Well, the solar, this law doesn't interfere with the New York State energy law and the state code for it so that the state regulates all of those types of issues. So we're not changing it. So whatever regulations for safety, et cetera, that the manufacturer has to comply with, they're still going to have to be complied with.
Do we actually know what that regulation is?
I could pull it out, it's in the energy law.
Yeah, because I did a little research and if, if those solar panels store, store energy, disposing of those batteries.
Right, the disposal is.
Those more damage to the environment than carbon production or CO2 from cars or anything else, so. And if the state allows it, do we have in our town, can we not allow it?
Well, the state regulates how they're disposed and how they're used, so that preempts us from addressing that issue. You can't, and if the state said, as long as your panel meets X, Y, and Z, it's in compliance with the energy law, we can prohibit it then. We would have to go through a process just like you would if you want to make the building code more restrictive. You have to appeal to the state, get their approval. And usually in an issue like that, I don't think they would give you the right to do it, yeah.
Well, my point is that the state is pushing this, like Michelle said, incentives and grants and everything else.
Most of the ones we've seen the applications for don't really have the batteries. I mean, it's more that it's connected directly into the power system and it's, the power's being used.
Most of them have been meter.
I think the battery issue is getting, will be more than your cars when they come, like when there's a lot of electric cars that you.
Yeah, but they do make, even the solos with the, with the.
No, I, I agree, yeah.
Yeah, solar with the storage battery inside and that would be like remedying something with a more of a detriment to the environment, so just wanted to.
I would think it was, it was approved as long as it's disposed of properly. And I'm sure that's what they look at when they approve these things.
My only suggestion with this is you might want to consider referring it to the zoning board for their comments since they've been addressing a few that have come before them.
Good point.
And they may be better to point out about a side yard dimension or something like that.
And I have one from the building department. They were recommending that we maybe want to consider having a site visit so that the, whoever comes in with the application has to set up a site visit so that we have to go out at the site because a lot of times it's hard to tell the screening. In one, I can give you an example. In one case, there was, it looked like screening from an aerial map. And then when we actually went out there, the trees were actually completely trimmed on the bottom because they load underneath them. So it looked like they, they were screened from the neighbor.
Yeah.
But then when you went out and set the site, you could completely see through the trees to the, to the panels inside. So that was one of the thoughts, that perhaps we should have some sort of requirement that a site visit is, is part of the application process.
Could you incorporate that into this local law that we're going to be proposing?
Sure.
That we could have a site visit. Pre-construction site or pre, pre, yeah, for the, pre-permit issuance, site visits are required. It's a good idea. Okay. But basically because we are getting a few of these now, we should, you know, if we do have a law for the solar panels that we could, we're comfortable with, we could adopt, we should probably do that. And then we'll take a look at the wind and any other changes we have to make down the road. Any, any other comments on the solar panels?
Well, for residential use, what about commercial use?
It'd be, they would have to, commercial wouldn't have to have site plan approval from our planning board, that, because that's how we've been addressing that already.
Okay.
And then some of these setbacks and things would still apply.
Okay. And also I see that it says in one paragraph B of section one that they, it doesn't interpret it to prohibit the sale of excess power generated, but does New York State allow either commercial or a resident if they generate more energy than they use to sell to the power company?
Yeah, it goes through Central Hudson, they have one.
Okay, so if they.
Well, the, no, the purpose for this restriction is that it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't inhibit, you know, incidental extra power going to the utility.
Right.
But it would prohibit somebody from just putting up the panels solely to sell it and not having any.
Right. You'd have to put up a lot of panels.
Use on the subject property.
Okay.
You would need a lot of panels.
What is it set at, 125% of your?
Yeah, it's, it's been a percent, they're allowed to do this percentage over.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, right.
And we typically.
So as long as the primary purpose is only for your home, there's no problem if you generate a little extra and it goes to the power company.
Right.
But it would prohibit it if 100% of the solar power is being sold.
Right. Because they could say that they want to build more because they anticipate using more power in the future.
Correct, correct.
Or a pool or something else, so.
And we have typically.
Where do we stop?
We've been typically requiring them to show us like some example of what their energy bill is and then what the maximum output is supposed to be. So we're sort of looking at that when we look at the applications.
Has anybody surpassed what they actually use?
No, I think it's pretty hard here, you know, unless, unless they're building it like an entire.
We need a farm, yeah, we need a solar farm.
More sun or more panels.
Mhm.
All right, this is a law that I would like to also take a look at, amending the sign ordinance definitely, but also this solar panel law because this is something that is becoming more popular, so. You want to just take a look at this and get back to Tom if you would, if you have any issues with this local law? And we'll see what we can do. Tom will add that, that part about having a pre, pre-building permit issuance, site inspection, which I think would be a good idea, so. Any, any other discussion on it? Peter?
Nope.
Good. Okay. That sounds good. So Michelle's got a task, Tom's got a task. Okay, thank you very much. Controller still isn't, no, he's just holding out for the money.
He's just waiting to get that money from.
He's waiting to get that check from.
From Branca.[1640.12]
From Franco.
John, if I may, I have a question. If we could go back to the signage, I, as I was reading that ordinance or the local town law, there is something in there that is talking about, I think it's Paragraph 9, Design Criteria 153-7, and it talks about rotating signs, animated part, illuminated, any flashing, blinking, change in density of color, fluctuating or otherwise animated, light. That's forbidden in the town, right?
Mm-hmm.
But-
Not an illuminate, I mean, this is one that's moving and, you know, like, has an arrow that keeps, you know, pointing to it.
Well, it, it says rotating otherwise, but it also talks about flashing, blinking, changing the density of the color.
Right.
I, I noticed that the library recently put one of those signs-
They're a public library district, so we can't regulate them. Just like the school district has the sign, we can't regulate them because they're a municipal corporation. The library is incorporated by New York State law as a public library district, reelected by trustees.
You know, I, I just want to make comment for the community that it shouldn't be condoned to one of those buildings, and then we try to over-regulate the business community. I mean, we live in the same town, and here is the library or some other entity not going through what we put our business community through, so.
But that's beyond our control, that's up to the-
I understand, and-
So we have to take it up with the state legislators and ask them to have New York State say that fire districts, library districts, and everything are regulated by the town board, so.
Yeah.
So that happens.
We still have our black and white sign out front.
Yes.
It doesn't, it doesn't bother anybody with blinking, flashing, or any of that stuff. It's just when the guy's got to change the letters, that's the only time it bothers him.
It's like the police car, those lights that go on and off on each side of the car?
Yeah.
Put those in your car and drive down the road. You'll get a ticket. That guy there will give it to you. But his car can do it.
Any other comments? All righty. We're going to move on now to, I might gender the title. Oh, Mike has notes on it. I'm going to write myself notes. Liaison reports. We're going to move now to liaison reports by town board members. I'd like to report really quickly, I'm liaison to the East Fischel Police Department, and I would just like to say, if I may, find my notes, now that I've lost them. I'd like to say that, I'd like to commend our police department on their activity. On September 9th, at approximately 8:30 PM, Officer Stannis responded to an assist at a medical call for unresponsive 20-year-old female who reportedly overdosed on heroin at a residence. Officer Stannis issued the dose of Narcan, and she became conscious and alert, and she was transported to Mid Hudson Regional Hospital by the East Fiscal Rescue Squad and Mobile Life paramedics. On September 11th, 2015, approximately 5:30 PM, Sergeant Tarpe and Officer Morum responded to assist a 35-year-old hopeful junction man who is not breathing and suffering from an apparent overdose of a heroin, of heroin and cocaine. Sergeant Tarpe issued two doses of Narcan, which reversed the effects and rendered the male conscious and alert. The male was transported to Mid Hudson Regional Hospital by East Fiscal Rescue and Mobile Life Support. So I'd really like to thank Officer Stannis, Sergeant Tarpe, and Officer Morum for their actions in saving these two people's lives. This Narcan is just an amazing, amazing drug, and I thank goodness that we're allowed, that we have it at our disposal. We've had one Narcan public training session a few months ago. I believe that we've scheduled to have another Narcan training scheduled here in the town hall, I believe sometime in October for the public, and that is overseen by Dutchess County Medical People. But I got to tell you, thank you very much for, you know, providing us with these Narcan drugs, which really can save lives, and this instance, we've saved two, in just, in just within a very short period of time of each other. So really, thank you very much for the officers and the sergeant. And also, we had a couple arrests, two felony grand larceny arrests as a result of ongoing investigations. So I'd like to say that our police department does a great job, they're always busy, and thank them for their service. And again, thank you for saving these lives with Narcan, it's just amazing. That's, that's why I have to report for the police department. Next is Councilman Cassidy, Highway. How's our highway department doing? Peter?
Highway's doing good, busy, getting a lot done. What I'd really like to report on those a little bit, more on Community Day, which is this weekend.
Peter is the chairman, oh, is that your title, chairman?
Co-chairman.
Co-chairman.
I guess I'm not anymore, Ethel quit.
You're the chairman, because Ethel must retire, so Peter's the chairman of the-
Chairman of Community Day.
Yeah.
20th coming up, meeting with the police department, they do a lot to help us, the fire police do, fire departments, all the civic organizations, recreation, everybody pulls together for the one day. Parade will be kicking off at 11 o'clock. Lineups for the walkers will be on Trinka. Lineups for the vehicles will be on Palin. Lot of different groups come up. One thing I'd like to reiterate, we've tried to keep this political campaign free for 20 years. I'd really like to encourage us to stay that way. I put a poll out to the town board, majority of the town board would really like to keep it that way. So please, I'm not saying that nobody's ever snuck in through with the sign or something that said, elect, please don't wear anyone. It's really not what Community Day's about, and I just encourage everybody to come out and have a good time and support the local not-for-profits and the community, which is what the day's been about for 20 years. That's it, thank you.
Couldn't agree more, Peter. Thank you very much. And good beautiful weather, we're hopeful to have a very, very nice Community Day.
No rain forecast.
No rain, unfortunately, it's a little bit dry. All righty. Councilman DeLisandro, planning and zoning, anything going on with our planning and zoning departments?
There's always something going on.
There's always something going on.
But zoning has been a little busy because of pools and whatnot, but, so people know it's the end of the season, and people are putting pools in at the end of the season. We did have a little change to the procedures that we do for the pools, because there's been a lot of problems with pools. So if people are putting in pools, please contact the building department and ask what the changes are, because we have to make sure that they're inspected properly, and they, there's been a lot of problems coming back to the zoning board issues.
Really? Yeah, so. You know, to that, to that end, and this is one thing, I think if we could do with Channel 22, interview with the building department and talk about these issues, because we need to, we, you know, we have rules, and some of our New York State rules, we have rules, and if we could educate people before they do something, things better off. Maybe we could get Channel 22-
It's a good idea.
And we'll talk to our building department and say, what are the most common problems that you encounter? And if it's swimming pools, if it's a setback, if it's a fence, if it's something like that. Maybe we could do something in the next couple weeks, because you say the end of the year, for some reason now they're putting a lot of pools.
They are, yeah, end of season, they're doing that.
And that would help the zoning board with their workload, too.
It gets a little hairy, too.
Maybe we put something together like, I think that'd be a, a public service announcement, something like that, so we could do that.
And also, I'd like to thank all the people, many people have called and sent notes thanking myself and Councilman Franco for our last show that we did on Spotlight. We did Jackson Farm, and I guess it was very popular, and I've had a few farmers call and thank me that we're putting a little spotlight on the farmers, and they say that it's needed because there's less and less farms, so I just thank you to everyone.
I couldn't agree, let's not forget our farmers. Very good, very good. Councilman Franco, Recreation Board, how's our Recreation Board?
Doing very well, the leagues are resuming their fall schedule, soccer, baseball back underway, and basketball sign up began last night.
Wow.
Yep, and if-
Twenty years ago.
If your child is interested in playing basketball, you can sign them up, either here at the rec department or at Lime Killon Facility until September 24th.
Very good.
So get out there and play some round ball.
Very good, very good. Everything else going well?
Everything's going very well.
Good, good, good. Councilman Marinero, Hillside Lake Special Park, anything going on?
Not much going on in Hillside Lake, just want to, again, there's been some work done by the highway department, I believe it's, they've done quite a bit of work, drainage on East Vacation.
How's Grace coming?
I'm sorry?
The job, how's that job coming out there?
Well, I also contacted them about Grace Road, there was an issue with water and ice, and they took care of that. Hopefully, we'll see how the winter goes, and if there is more work needed, they're willing to go back there, so. And Grace Road was an issue that had been going on for quite a few years, but the highway department then responded really fast and was there and took care of the problem. I contacted the communities that live near the area, let me know if anything else comes up, but we'll see when it starts raining what happens, but so far, it's been okay.
Good, good.
Besides that, I don't know if there is anything else with the grant, but some people have asked me about that. I didn't have anything else to tell them, because I don't think we heard anything.
Just waiting, just waiting. But I have had a couple calls from the community also.
Yeah, so.
Basically, they ask for more questions, we answer more questions, and then we wait.
There's been a lady that contacted me, she's putting together a group of homeowners, the people that live around the perimeter of the lake. Apparently, she's, she was thinking about putting an addition to the house, but there is the septic situation, and Dutchess County Health Department actually told them that there is a new system where they could put three or four parcels together-
Yeah.
-and share the system. So I said it's a great idea, she's working on that, she's going to go around and contact the people, and says, when you have something going on solid-
Yeah.
-let us know, and we'll bring it to the board, and-
Yeah, no, that's terrific.
Yeah, so.
As you know, Hillside Lake is a very complicated issue, we talked about septics and the quality of the water in the lake. We actually contacted the Board of Health. The gentleman that's doing, that's making an application for a grant for the, the stormwater is involved in those small systems. He actually is distributor of them, and we talked about them, and he's doing a pilot program in Ulster, Orange County, somewhere across the river, and Dutchess, we've notified Dutchess County Board of Health, and they're very interested. They've looked at, we've, we've all discussed Hillside Lake as being a possible area, if we could do something like it. The problem with that is the cost of the systems. But as the gentleman, as you just said, too, the distributor says you can connect a few houses to one, that drops the cost.
Yeah.
So we're taking a look at that, and the Board of Health hasn't approved them yet, but they're very, very interested in seeing how they go.
The lady told me that, I mean, this is just off the, off the record, that maybe they could have a system installed for around figure 10,000. This is for three or four homes, and there is a filtration system also that goes with that, that has to be maintained.
Yeah.
They also tried to really calculate how much that is, but the benefit to everybody will be enormous, because now you have a system where it's actually, somebody takes care of it, you don't pollute.
Yeah.
And she's doing all the work.